Good evening and welcome to this evening's Select Board meeting. It is Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. It is 7:00 PM. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for playback by wrps@youtube.com/wrpsrockland. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. The law gives the chair of a public body discretion to decide if public comment will be permitted, but the law does not require that a public body allow public comment or public participation during its meetings. Attorney Clifford, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have community announcements. First one.
Thank you, Tip. Oh, sorry. Yeah, this might be a little awkward. I apologize.
It's okay.
And I just want to say at the beginning, I can see John, Lori, and Tiffany, but the camera's not able to move over where Steve and Mike are, so I apologize if I don't recognize them or if I cut them off. But real quick with community announcements, Rockland Day was on the agenda because it was posted before Rockland Day, so folks would be aware of it. And the Rockland Day Committee asked us to specifically thank all the members of the Rockland Day Committee, the Parks Department, the police and fire departments, the volunteers. I think we had over 100 vendors and all the attendees, so I want to thank everyone that helped make that event so successful. Next, I wanted to highlight town offices are going to be closed this Thursday, the 19th, due to the Juneteenth holiday. And then we put on the Agenda 100 Community Announcements our summer schedule, which is the Fridays that were closed in the summer. And because the Fourth of July is on a Friday, we kicked that that day over onto Monday, July 7th. So those days are listed there for the public to be aware when we're closed. And then lastly, there's a whole bunch of board and committee vacancies that we have listed, and I know we've talked about a few of these in the past, but the town clerk thought it'd be helpful to really list all of them, and I thought that was a great idea. And Liza also just wanted me to remind everybody that gets either appointed or elected to various boards and committees to make sure to get sworn in at the town clerk's office, complete their ethics training and all the other types of things that are included in the board and committee handbook for everyone. So those are all the announcements I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, would you like me to read the list of the little bits?
Your call if you'd like to, sure.
Great. Just so everyone's aware, the board committee vacancies are as follows. The ADA Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, the Charter Maintenance Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Finance Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Committee, Rent Control Board, Recreation Committee, Taxation Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, Alternate Position. And that's it. Thank you. Next, we have the minutes from June 3rd, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we have new business awning permits. Allison, do you want to speak to it?
I can.
Town Planner Allison Quinn, thank you for joining us.
Of course. Thank you for having me. So before you, you should have two applications for our awnings. One is for KMR Beauty, and the other one is Mayflower Tax Service. They're both in our Union Street area. One is actually a recipient of our Sign of the Side grant program. Both of those awnings are compliant with our sign bylaws, and we're recommending that you approve them in the support of our local business community.
Great. Do we have any questions or feedback?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say this program really will make Uptown look a lot better. So thank you for taking, you guys for taking the reins on that.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about it. It was like a little bit of a slow rollout because we were just getting onboarded, but the applications were all great. We wish we could have funded everyone, but we're pretty happy with the outcome.
Awesome.
Thank you. Wonderful. So do we have a motion to approve the Mayflower Tax and Insurance awning at 327 Union Street and the Tox Me Up Wellness Spa at 217 Union Street Avenue?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the reappointments. We have the reappointments of registrar voters, Peter Dow for a three-year term, and the Historical Commission, Douglas Becker, for a three-year term. Peter Dow is approved by Liza Landy, Town Clerk.
Motion to reappoint.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Next, we have the discussion of potential vote to release the summary of independent investigation pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 23B. Attorney Clifford is joining us. Please.
Good evening. In response to complaints from several individuals in late 2024, the Select Board initiated an investigation into Mr. Charles Hessian, who was alleged to have violated the town's discriminatory harassment policy and his treatment of those individuals. As my firm had done an investigation into Mr. Hessian in 2022, the board elected to have the investigation done by an independent firm that had no prior connection to Rockland. The investigation was actually completed some time ago, but due to a number of unrelated issues, there's been a delay in reporting the results. The investigation report is a confidential personnel record and is not subject to release. Members of the board have been given access to read the report prior to this meeting, but the actual report will remain a confidential document. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 23B, when the Select Board initiates an investigation, you are required to report the findings to the town clerk, and that report will be included in the next annual town report. In 2022, the board released an executive summary of the prior investigation that my firm completed into Mr. Hessian, and it was included in the next annual town report. And I'm asking you to do the same thing this evening. I did reach out to Mr. Hessian prior to this meeting and offered to meet with him to discuss the results of the investigation, but I haven't heard from him. He was sent a copy of the executive summary that you have before you to vote on this evening, so he does have that. As Mr. Hessian is no longer a town official, there is no action that the board can take against him. That is why I recommend that there does not be a hearing. As for the results of the investigation, I think the executive summary speaks for itself. As part of the process under the town's harassment policy, I met with the women that made the initial complaints. While there was certainly some relief that they no longer had to work with this individual, they shared serious frustration that this misconduct had gone on for so long without action by the town. They also felt that the report could have gone even farther into more allegations of misconduct by the same individual. Without hesitation, I will say that they're right, and I would include myself in accepting responsibility for tolerating what became a pattern of pervasive misconduct or mistreatment of town employees. Over the course of time, I think many of us adopted the view that nothing could be done if the offending individual was an elected official. While there are certainly limitations on actions that can be taken against elected officials that are engaged in misconduct, there are steps that can be taken to advise public officials of the potential for personal liability, possibly limiting access of an offending official to town buildings and employees, and making sure that anyone who feels that they're being subjected to improper treatment feels that they can make a complaint without fear of retaliation. And, and some of those steps are described in the executive summary. So I think there are some affirmative actions we can take going forward to improve the situation. But again, these employees were subjected to treatment that they should not have been subjected to. I will say that it was consistent with some of the findings in the investigation we did in 2022, where we identified other employees who had been subject to similar mistreatment. So I think with that, I'm recommending that you adopt the executive summary and release it to the town clerk so that it can be published in the next annual town report. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Questions or feedback?
Yeah. To be honest, I was really pulled in making this decision tonight because, you know, Chuck's no longer, you know, they, the whole board essentially resigned, and really, we, we are not dealing with that type of behavior from him anymore. And I was like, why should we publish it and shame him? But then, why shouldn't we, you know, you know, we, we voted to do the investigation. These findings were found that he was abusive, and the women involved, I think, you know, need to be validated. So, on the other hand, so that's, that's it. So what's, why, why does it need to be published in the annual report is what I would wanted to ask you?
That's what the statute requires, that, that when the Select Board initiates an investigation, that you publish it in the annual town report. It's a public document. It can be released as soon as you vote it this evening, but that is a specific requirement that it be put in the town report.
Okay. I mean, personally, the reasons that they gave for resigning was because I forced them to quit, that I did, and I, that really wasn't the way it was at all. So this kind of validates some of that, too. And, but I, I really had struggled to, you know, make a decision on this one. That's it.
Do we have any questions or feedback?
Just this to the employees, the town of Rockland. I know I'm new to this seat, but completely agree with the, the report, and I want to thank Compliance Plus and Clifford and Kenny for undertaking this work. I know it's not easy, especially when, you know, you're dealing with an elected official, someone in the position of authority, but no employee in this town should ever feel the fear of retribution for coming forward if they feel they're being mistreated. That's something that I take very seriously, and I think everyone within a position of authority within the town should take that very seriously as well. And I think it also goes to the fact that of the charter we just voted in and why it was so important to allow this to be handled like any other company would through HR, following the normal process leading up to investigation and addressing the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with both Lori and Steve. The, the women that came forward in this investigation deserve to have those results made public. We, we took a vote to, to do the investigation, and the investigation's findings were, were very damning, not necessarily as damning as, as maybe they, they could have been. I, I think there's some very general, a lot of generalizations in the summary, but, but the details of the investigation shows that there was a pattern of behavior, and it's a pattern of behavior that we've known about and that we tried to address at one point in the past. But again, you know, the difficulty of somebody being an elected official, and to Steve's point, with the new charter being the way it is, it gives some of that authority over to human resources and the town administrator and this board to actually be able to take action and hold people accountable. Being an elected official is not a free pass for bad behavior and, or not doing your job or being able to tell people that you, you only answer to the voters. You also have a, there's an expectation that you behave a certain way with the employees and, and also in the public. And to Steve's point, he takes it very seriously. We've always taken it very seriously up here, and, and I think it's important that the results of this investigation come forward.
Thank you.
And I guess I'll just say that I want to thank those who did come forward, for coming forward, because without that courage to come forward, this, you know, we wouldn't have been able to take any action. And while this investigation isn't maybe as satisfying as maybe they were hoping for, I do think that it, it does need to be made public, both for their sake and for Mr. Hessian's sake, because, you know, the, the findings weren't, as Mike said, as, maybe as damning as maybe they could have been or what people were thinking they might have been. So it's kind of a, both sides probably should want to have this, you know, come out, so I'm certainly good with releasing it.
Thank you.
Plus, plus, to, to pay for this investigation, we use taxpayer dollars. So for that reason, it should also be released.
And I agree with all, with all that's been said, and just want to reinforce the fact that it's our priority to, as best we can, safeguard the experiences that the employees of this town have. And, you know, with the charter and a new protocol, the hope would be that moving forward, utilizing this, you know, hopefully this doesn't happen, but that people who are having any experiences like this do know that they can come forward to HR and that the board will certainly support them. So with that said, do we have a motion to release the?
Motion to release.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Tiffany, may I make a comment?
Please.
I want to thank all the board members for, for all of your comments, and particularly for your support of staff. It's, it's really critical that staff feels support, not only from me, but from the elected officials, to be able to, you know, empower them. Everything you said, I just want to thank you all for that. And I just wanted to add that our HR Director, Lori Taylor, has volunteered to work on updating our personnel policies and our board and committee handbook, which ultimately will need to be presented to you for your approval. Because as John Clifford noted, you know, there are a lot of limitations in what we're able to do with elected officials and with their behavior. There are a few things, but there's certainly a lot of limitations, but I think that we can do more or setting guidelines and expectations clearly in writing that are given to every elected official when they're sworn in that could hopefully, you know, help prevent this type of behavior in the future. So I'm assuming you guys are amenable to that, and we can present something in the future once Lori's done a little bit more work and, and most likely had things reviewed by town council as well before we present them to you. So I just wanted to highlight that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next, we have other new business not reasonably anticipated.
I have none.
Okay. Next, we have old business. We have the continuation of public hearing pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 64, potential modification of 90-day suspension of inholders licensed to sell alcoholic beverages to wit, 167 Union Street LLC, DBA The Banner, William T. Barry, manager. John, are you, Attorney Clifford?
I want to thank all the town employees who've been putting, putting a lot of time and effort into monitoring this situation and working with the property owner to try to get it to a point where it's, it's safe to reopen. There was a walkthrough, we scheduled a walkthrough last Thursday to try to really determine where we are before this meeting, and Steve and Lori were available to, to do the walkthrough. But after the walkthrough, counsel for, I had a conversation with counsel for Mr. Barry, and he indicated that he knew he would not be ready, would not be able to sufficiently address many of the concerns in time for this meeting. The suspension that you issued back in April would have ended on July 1st, and the board isn't meeting again until July 8th, I believe. But basically, Mr. Barry has agreed to remain closed until your meeting of July 8th. And at that point, it will again be up to the board to determine whether all of the outstanding issues have been sufficiently addressed that would permit you to allow him to reopen. So I wasn't able to attend Chris Kenny from my office attended, but, you know, certainly Steve and Lori probably have some thoughts on what you saw and what the status is.
Before we go into thoughts, just kind of a procedural question. So he agreed to remain closed through our next meeting. Presume that's in writing, and that will hold up? Should he decide he wants to open in the interim?
He's, I've gotten it in writing from his attorney. So that's, that's the only reason.
Wouldn't he have to ask us?
I would suggest that, that I would suggest to the board that you not take any further action.
Wouldn't he just have to ask us? I mean, we're, we're the ones that impose the suspension. We'd have to be the ones to lift the suspension. We gave him 90 days, but we haven't signed off on him, you know, opening. We talked about it. I said, let's not get to day 88, and have you come to us and say this stuff's not done? What are we, on day 70? 75?
On July 8th, you will have the option, I mean, it was scheduled for a suspension here. You will have the option of extending that suspension further on July 8th if we're still not there.
Well, I think, I just thought it was funny that he agreed where, he agreed to stay closed when we haven't lifted the suspension. And he wasn't ready tonight.
I mean, there are candidly, there are border health issues. There are other issues that, you know, above and beyond what this board would act on that would not allow them to reopen. I mean, I, there has been a tangible effort being made, which was not the case back in April. There was no visible effort that things, work was actually being done. Deputy Chief Haney has been over there constantly. They do have a working fire alarm system in the building, which we did not have on April 1st. So some things have been done, but again, it's, it's not to the point that would permit them to reopen. So it'll, it'll all be back before you, and on July 8th, you'll have the option of possibly allowing him to reopen, allowing him to reopen with conditions, or just extending the suspension. So the options will still be before July 8th.
Okay. Any other feedback?
Yeah. My, my issue with Mr. Barry, with as much as I've dealt with him since the suspension, is that he says he's going to take care of things, and they just don't happen. I mean, he said he got all the electricity taken care of, but he went out on the second floor, and there's like this octopus of open wires that are literally going into one energy source. Like, I don't know, I, I would guess maybe 12, 15 wires, and they're open, they're not, you know, covered or anything. And they're held down to the side of the building with insulation foam. And that, that seems like a fire hazard to me. So I, you know, and what, what isn't he getting about the safety aspect? And he still owes like $28,000 in fines, and I don't see how we can, you know, make a precedent to let that, to overlook that for him. Right? And there's a lot. There's, there's licensing issues with the ABCC board. There's, there's a lot, so.
There's been no promises or inferences of relief, and I do want to thank Courtney. Courtney's been kind of quarterbacking and coordinating all the effort on this, just to make sure everybody is on the same page, getting all the information. We are going to send you an update, the things that really should be happening before your next meeting. But what I wanted to accomplish was not to just wait until we show up here on a Tuesday night and then find out what has and what hasn't been done. And I think, you know, the monitoring has been really consistent, and, you know, there's been progress. Whether it's sufficient progress for you to permit him to reopen on July 8th, that will be up to you.
You know, I mean, if, if I owned a bar and my liquor license was suspended, I would be... be working my butt off to try to get it absolutely perfect. And, you know, when I was there, they had a keg room that was in complete disarray and Deli could hardly get the door open. And then when she did, the ceiling had caved in. So it's like, I, you know.
I, I do think it's important for us to keep in mind what, what we are actually responsible for here though. So we are responsible for the liquor license and that he has the liquor liability insurance in place. It's up to the board of health and the other inspectors to make the decision on reopening the building from a public safety standpoint. So if we, I think, you know, there's a couple of different things. Obviously, we're going to support whatever decision that they make and empower them and let them hear the words that, you know, what our thoughts are and our opinions are. But it is important for us to remember that if, if he satisfies the liquor liability insurance portion and satisfied that he is getting his, his alcohol from authorized vendors approved by the ABCC and that he, he satisfied that portion of it, then it makes sense for us to give the liquor license portion back. And I think every single one of us wants to see the banner open and be successful again. But it's important for us to remember that it's, it's up to the inspectors and the, the health agent to make the ultimate decision as far as being able to open the business for, for public again.
Yeah, correct. But I, I would not feel comfortable giving him back a liquor license when the outside electricity is in such a, such disarray.
But if he has the permits in place, if he has the stuff that, that pertain directly to us, then we give it back based on, on that portion. And some of the things that were actually asked, right? We did ask that he, he meet these standards. He meet what we asked, what the health agent, what the fire inspector and the building inspector and the wiring inspector, that we, he meet the conditions that they put on him. So we can sit back and say that we're not satisfied with the results. We also, John made, made a great point to say, I'm not comfortable opening, giving your license back until you paid all the fines. Exactly, exactly your words, right? So, so, you know, if we're not satisfied with the conditions that we put as a board on him, then we don't have to allow him anything. But from a standpoint of the liquor license itself, if he's satisfied the liquor liability insurance, ABCC, and that he's getting his, his booze, his alcohol from authorized ABCC approved vendor, then that portion can be given back. Doesn't mean that it's open for the public, but we can do it in phases so that it doesn't draw the process out. So that when it becomes a health, health meeting, they can have it. And, you know, we say that we're satisfied and it's contingent upon those boards and committees and inspectors being comfortable with what they have asked, you know, and the fines being paid.
And there's, there's another issue too, that he, with the ABCC board, that, you know, he, he's licensed as an innkeeper and it's not used as an inn.
But that's, that's, I guess, that's probably the ABCC to come down and issue some kind of a hearing, but that's a separate licensing board as well.
Yeah.
So if he satisfies the town of Rockland issues, then we do what we have to do. And like I said, you know, I don't think any of us wanted to see this thing go on for, I mean, it was, this is 90 days, but it went on for, what, a month and a half before that? Right? So, you know, we're up there. It's been a while and, you know, it's important for us and to, to John's point initially, you take away the liquor license from that building and it, it takes away the value of the property altogether. And it becomes blight in the center of the town. And I think it's important for our town that that is a thriving business. I wish we had a, an owner that was as interested in it being a thriving business in this town as, as much as the residents are. That doesn't seem to be the case at this point. He's dragged his feet for 120 days. Who knows how much longer he's going to drag his feet? He's making some progress, but I think it's just important that we remember what our responsibility is here. And that's to support the inspecting agents and, you know, make sure that all the liquor liability issues are taken care of. And then they can go off to the recommendations that we have from there, you know, the commitments that he made to us as a board, so.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Now, we have other old business not reasonably anticipated.
I have none.
Next, we have select board liaison updates. Do any of the select board members have liaison updates this evening?
I do.
Okay. Vice Chair Child.
It's Board of Health again. So at 12:43 this afternoon, Robert Stevens, the chair of the Board of Health, let the staff and Michelle Kennedy know that he wouldn't be able to attend tonight's meeting. And until Attorney Galvin contacted, he or his mother, by the way, couldn't attend it. And they, yeah, and they had trash abatements and meeting minutes for several dates to approve, but they also had someone coming in from the state for a tobacco violation. And he had no idea that was on his own agenda. So when he was told that, he decided to, he was going to come in on Zoom, but then he decided to come in personally. So that's, that's it. I just wanted to update you on the latest.
Okay, do we have any other liaison updates? Okay. Thank you. With that, let's see. Next, we have the town administrators' report and correspondence. Doug?
Thank you, Tiffany. Just one quick one tonight. I am pleased to announce that Plymouth County has awarded us an additional $150,000 in county ARPA funding. And to be clear, just so everyone's on the same page, we've been spent our full allocation of federal ARPA funding through Plymouth County is approximately $3.2 million. And as I updated the board months ago, surprisingly, there were several towns that did not spend, request or spend their full allocation. So those other towns like Rockland that had fully spent ours were able to apply for additional funding beyond our additional allocation, subject to the county approval. And so we had requested $300,000 in total for both water and sewer to help finance their respective generator installation projects. Because of the amount of available funding, we were approved for 50% of what we requested. So we got, we're getting $150,000. So I'm very pleased about that and hopefully there'll be some additional rounds of additional funding related to ARPA because I think they're doing it in phases. So there, there could potentially be a little bit more to come as well. But I just wanted to highlight that. And I've been in touch with Dave Taylor and Crystal Cameron at Sewer and Water to let them know about that. And that will certainly help those enterprise fund budgets cover the cost for those important projects. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have select board comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the select board and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Select Board O'Laughlin? Select Board Member O'Laughlin?
Okay. So Doug, that's a, that's a great update on the Plymouth County ARPA fund. Right from the start, you and your office have been doing your due diligence on that. And, and we hoped to be in this position that, you know, these other towns that, that sat back and waited, that, that money was, was allocated and that we'd be able to cash in. So great job to you guys for, for being on top of it right from the word go. So kudos, great job, guys. Also, just, it was stated at the very beginning, but, you know, congratulations to the Rockland Day Committee on putting on a good show once again on Rockland Day.
Thank you. I'd like Board Member O'Donnell.
Thank you. Thursday will mark the 160th anniversary of the release of the last group of slaves in Galveston, Texas. This day marked the end of slavery in America. The local black community in Texas went on to celebrate the first Juneteenth the following year. In 2021, then-President Biden signed legislation marking Juneteenth as a federal holiday. As a result, most of us have this day off from work. As you enjoy the day, take a moment to consider, consider what the day represents. While the day may remind us of dark times in this country when people were treated as property, it is also a reminder that we can change for the better and come out stronger on the other side. I want to congratulate and thank the Rockland Day organizers for a successful yet wet event. Congratulations to all the students who wrapped up into the year in Rockland Public Schools. I hope they enjoy a well-earned break this summer and encourage families to take a look at all the programs Rockland Recreation has in store for the community this summer. Thank you to all the parent advisory committee members for their work this year. I'd like to acknowledge the Phelps PAC for raising $78,000 this school year. This represents over 86% of all money raised by RPS PACs combined. And then since we won't be meeting again until after July 4th, I'd like to wish everyone a safe and happy Independence Day. I'll leave you with this quote from Common Sense by Thomas Paine. "A long habit of not thinking a thing wrong gives its superficial appearance of being right. It raises a first, a formidable outcry in defense of custom, but tumult soon subsides. Time makes more converts than reason. The cause of America is in great measure the cause of all mankind. Many circumstances have and will arise, which are not local but universal, and through which principles of all lovers of mankind are affected, in the event of which their affections are interested. Delaying a country desolate with fire and sword, declaring war against natural rights of all mankind, and extirpating the defenders thereof from the face of the earth, a concern of every man to whom nature hath given the power of feeling, of which class, regardless of party censure, is the author." Thank you.
Select Board Member Ellen?
Yes, my one comment is, is I don't like following Steve in the select from comments. But seriously, congratulations to Rockland Day for putting on a, a great event. As Mike said, great job on getting the, the ARPA money when other towns, I can't believe that they didn't do that. And that's it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Child?
Yeah. Yay, Rockland Day. It was super fun and I'm very happy there was no dunk tank this year, although there are many of you out there in, in Rockland who I'm sure would have loved to dunk me a time or two in it. Also, I had the honor of attending the grand reopening of the Shea Naval Aviation Museum on the base. And it was emotional and it was a bunch of hardworking, the hardworking team of the Association of Naval Aviation led by Mark Fritazio was, it was phenomenal. They repainted the jet, you know, the jet on the base. They put up new signage that was done by a, a middle school in Weymouth. And a lot of people showed up and I, I highly recommend visiting the museum because they were able to preserve the naval history and marine history that happened on the base. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you. I would also like to commend Rockland Day Committee. Thank you very much. It was amazing and so much hard work for, for all of us to enjoy. And I want to wish all of our students and our teachers a very well-deserved, wonderful vacation. And I would just like to commend two very involved Rockland residents. The last day of school was a half a day at Phelps Elementary School. It ended at 10:45. And a wonderful couple happened to be friends of mine, but Andrew and Lori Campbell asked permission of the Parks Department to utilize Jefferson Field. And that was granted. And they extended an open invitation to, you know, and, and anyone who, any of the Phelps families that would like to join a group play date slash barbecue at the Jefferson Field. And if I could tell you that it was so powerful to see the community come together, celebrate our kids, celebrate our families and such, and this is where Rockland comes to life and Rockland does this time and time again. But old school celebrated with so much heart. Kids ran around for hours, you know, soccer balls were kicked into goals, basketballs were shot into hoops, the Jefferson Park, though it may be old, those swing sets were singing. And the, the park was brought to life. And time, time again, Rockland really wins. And in this case, I literally walked around with my, you know, smile that I couldn't turn off, but it just sometimes goes to show what a wonderful pair of people with a vision and enthusiasm can do for our community. And because, because they did this, you know, it ignited enthusiasm from so many more. So I just wanted to, to basically commend Andrew and Lori Campbell because they, they did something very special, but they brought Jefferson to life. So with that said, I'd like to wish everybody a wonderful summer vacation. And we are next going into executive session. So I'm going to take a roll call vote to enter into the following executive session, not to reconvene, but executive session A per MGL C 30A, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, parcel ID 78-9-0, and B per MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, police, superior's union. Roll call vote. Do I, do I have a motion for that? Where am I? Select Board Member O'Laughlin? Let's make a motion first. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Select Board Member O'Laughlin?
Yes.
All right. Select Board Member O'Donnell?
Yes.
Select Board Member Ellen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Child?
Yes.
And me, that's a yes. Good night, everyone.